Next Villanova Middle Schools Teacher of the Year Jennifer Hardy. Hamlet Middle Schools Teacher of the Year Erica Jacobson. Leo Savoy Elementary Schools Teacher of the Year Tracy Paskanik. Perthia Citizens Elementary Campus Teacher of the Year Bonnie Rondo. Next, I'm going to recognize our Wensocket Education Department employees for the 24-25 school year. First, I'm going to start with our Burnin Heights Teacher of the Year who happened to be the District Teacher of the Year. Before I announce the name of the recipient, let me just share some quotes from some nominating staff. She is a caring and kind educator that puts her students first. She builds a community of learners through her instruction each and every day. She is mindful, understanding, and looks to make change in her classroom. She is a team player, caring, a student teacher mentor, and a professional educator. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2024-25 Wensocket Education Department Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ashley Paley. Next is the Wensocket Education Department Administrator of the Year. But before I announce the recipient, winner, let me just give you some quotes from nominating staff. He is incredibly supportive and is attentive to student, faculty, and family needs. He continues to go above and beyond to support not only the Career Center but the main building, as well as taking care of, taking on many roles with a positive attitude and willingness to help in any way he can. He continues to create an atmosphere where the teachers as well as the students feel supported by him. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2024-25 Wensocket Education Department Administrator of the Year, Mr. Saftar Mahmood. Next, we have the Wensocket Education Department's Paraprofessional of the Year. Before I announce the winner, let me share with you some quotes from nominating staff. She goes above and beyond to fulfill the needs of all the students in her classroom. She is selfless and provides the students not only with material things but cares for each one of them. She shows the students the compassion that they need. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2024-25 Wensocket Education Department Paraprofessional of the Year, Ms. Patricia Collins. Next, before I announce the Wensocket Education Department's Secretary of the Year, let me mention to you some quotes from nominating staff. She is an amazing school nurse secretary. She always goes above and beyond for the nurses, students, and other staff members within all three schools she works, Wensocket High School, Hamlet, and Villanova Middle Schools. She is a friendly face to all in the building. The students' faces truly light up when they see her. It is a joy and pleasure to work with her. She's always helpful, responsive, thoughtful, and kind. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2024-25 Wensocket Education Department Secretary of the Year, Ms. Brenda Plas. Before I announce the Wensocket Education Department's Custodial Maintenance Employee of the Year, let me share some quotes from nominating staff with you. He goes above and beyond every day to keep Burnin Heights safe, clean, and maintained. He always has a positive attitude with a smile on his face and is happy to help even at the most inconvenient of times. He is amazing with the students and treats them with respect. He's a great role model for those students who need one. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2024-25 Wensocket Education Department Custodian Maintenance Employee of the Year, Matthew Phillips. The last wed employee of the year unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but I'm still going to tell you who that is. Thomas Wakely, our Technology Specialist for the District, is, has been named the Support Staff Employee of the Year for the 24-25 school year. Just to give you a little, a little bit of quotes from his nominating staff. He is a hard worker and is always up for a challenge when it comes to technical needs in the district. He always has a positive attitude with a kind smile on his face. He is an asset to the technology team. Thomas Wakely, Technology Specialist for the District.
With that, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I understand we have some goodies, so I'll make a motion to take a 10-minute recess at 7:18 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We are in recess.
Tell them where the goodies are.
Yeah, they can see it.
They can figure it out?
I'll make a motion to come out of recess at 7:29 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and your address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the committee, the administration team, or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion, and we ask you to please speak into the mic. Mayor Mo Shan.
Good evening. It's a pleasure being here. Thank you. I want to come first, give my congratulations to all the to all the recipients, teachers, administrators, clerical staff, custodian. Congratulations. Your dedication, hard work, and your passion for helping the students in these schools is very much thankful, and I appreciate everything that you do, especially Bonnie Rondo. I want to give a shout out to Bonnie. She left.
She's there.
There she is, Bonnie.
I'll keep this brief. You know, I get a lot of calls as the mayor from the city about million things. And, you know, I got the calls Monday about the unfortunate incidents and the fights that were here at the high school. And I had a very productive meeting today, and I want to thank Chairman Borger, Superintendent McGee, Chief Oates. We had a great meeting in my office about what the city, and I'm talking about the administration side of it, what we can do to help. As a parent of two former One Sockit High School graduates, I know it's difficult. And also, you know, I know many teachers put their heart and soul into their profession. And we want to make sure not only are our teachers and staff safe, our students are safe, and what we can do as a community, because we're all part of this. It's just not the school department's issue. It's a city issue. It's our community partners' issue. It's our public safety issue. It involves all of us. And I'll pledge this, as long as I'm the mayor of the city of One Sockit, I will continue to have dialogue with anybody and everybody on how we can do things better, whether that's at City Hall, school department, parks, you name it. I am invested fully into this city, not just because I'm the mayor, but I've lived here all my life. And again, I talked to a couple of parents about what happened, and of course, I didn't have all the details because it was evolving. But again, Dr. McGee, Superintendent, we all had a very good meeting today, and I pledge to you to do whatever I can to help. And as a parent, I was somewhat surprised when I heard today that there is no PTO at the high school. And I think there should be one. You know, parents have a say in this, obviously. So if you want to have a say, let's create a PTO again. I'd be glad to get involved, even though I don't have any kids in the system, because your voice is needed, your thoughts and ideas should be included in what you all do as a school committee to make things different and better. And I know we don't have all the answers. I surely don't. But I can tell you, we work better together when we do things together. Couple of little quick things. I know we have another football game Friday night, and I want to thank the athletic department and all the coaches and everybody that had a great opening night a week ago Friday. I wasn't able to attend, but I just want to point out a couple of things. We're still working out the kinks, right? The score, the speakers, we're trying to turn it down for the neighbors. The parking, we've worked with the school department about various parking alternatives, whether that be at the middle school, the high school, cas park, because the lot at the athletic complex, which holds about 150 parking spots, will be filled up pretty rapidly. So I ask you to please be cognizant of Millen Avenue, the one-way street, dead-end street, excuse me, and be cognizant of the neighbors. Please don't block their driveways. Please take your time, obey the speed limit, because there are people that live there. We want to enjoy this complex. We will enjoy this complex for many, many years to come. We are going to work out some of the issues that, you know, I've discussed. And I wanted to thank everybody for being involved. And listen, we have a lot of positive things that's happening in this city. We have our challenges also, but working together, we can solve them. And the last thing I'll say is, this is a great tool, and it can be the ban of my existence sometimes, right? And I think in schools, kids are there to learn. And having these with them all the time, I think there should be a conversation about putting these down where they're to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
David Andrews, One Sockit High School Social Studies teacher, One Sockit Teachers Guild Vice President of One Sockit High School, and One Sockit Area Career and Technical Center, 68 Cumberland Street. Last school year, several hundred teachers, students, and parents gathered here to implore the school committee and red administration to do something to address unsafe and unsecure conditions at One Sockit Public Schools. I'm here to ask those same questions once again. At that meeting last school year, I pointed out that there were far too many students at One Sockit High School wandering the halls, going to multiple lunches, and contributing to disciplinary problems as a result of this behavior. I ask that we find some way to increase personnel in the halls, especially during transition times and lunchtime, but also to patrol the halls during class time. I certainly realize that public schools are on a budget, but I know that we need to do something in order to address these problems before something potentially tragic occurs. I would like to think that Monday's five fights and 13 arrests at the high school during the school day were an anomaly. But whether they were or not, we need to do something about increasing the security of our schools. I'm sure my middle school and elementary colleagues have had similar situations at their schools and feel the same way about this. However this can be accomplished, I again ask that some type of action be taken. These incidences and their severity have increased in the past several years. It would be most regrettable if a tragedy were to occur as a result of lack of preparedness or lack of personnel. Cell phones are contributing to the disorder. Although a statewide cellphone ban has been passed, and One Sockit schools already technically have a cellphone ban in place, cell phones are on the present in our schools. Their use is exacerbated by situations like fights, with students rushing to the scene in order to get video of the fight. These fights are then posted on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, et cetera. And there is even an Instagram site, which I was not aware of until the other day, called Rooney Fights 25, that catalogs the fights between students. This is just another distraction caused by cell phones. Just about every student in the school has a cellphone, and attempting to police cellphone usage is like handing out speeding tickets at the Indy 500. After the fights on Monday, some high school staff noticed later that evening that several people had posted recruiting pictures for local charter schools on the Facebook One Sockit Community page. I know one thing that all public school administrators, teachers, and staff definitely agree on is that charter schools siphon away funds from the public schools. And continued bad press like this will be used as propaganda to the detriment of our public schools. I grow tired of explaining to people that it is not our public schools that are failing, rather it is our society as a whole that is failing our students. I want to say this too. The vast majority of our students are very serious and focused on graduating, on doing well in school. All students deserve an education. All of them also deserve a second chance. But not all students can adapt and succeed in the public school setting. There are, of course, some students who violate school rules and protocols on a regular basis. These students likely require a different educational setting in order to achieve success. But the process to accomplish this seems to be cumbersome and data-intensive. As such, administrators and teachers are spending more time addressing the behavior of a very small number of students than they are educating the majority of their students. This is also contributing to the charter school exodus. Our children are our most important resource, and we should be investing in them through providing them with the best possible public education. As Sitting Bill said, "Let us put our minds together and see what life we will make for our children." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Thomas Kervanderseis. I live at 46 Arnold Avenue in Cranston. But Monday through Friday, I'm across the soccer field there at Villanova Middle School, where I teach seventh grade social studies. About a week ago, us teachers received an email and noticed that all of the bathrooms at Villanova would be closed except for one. So for the last week, a school, a middle school of 700 students has been using one girls and one boys bathroom. I've been told when talking to our administration that the decision, that this decision is above their heads. So is that some level of a district-level decision? And that's what's controlling why this is happening and if and when it stops. So I'm here to request that somebody come and meet with the teachers at Villanova Middle School. I think we would love, or I would love, to hear, one, why this decision was made in the first place; two, what we're trying to accomplish at Villanova; and three, why we've decided that restricting students' access to use the bathroom is the most effective way to accomplish our goals. I can only speak for myself when I say that on a fairly regular basis over the last week, I've had students who are literally squirming in their seats because they have not been able to access a bathroom that now regularly has a line. I had a situation recently where a student who has several, last year had several incidences where he had accidents in school, could not access the bathroom for what I will say were 10 very, very tense moments, minutes, sorry, though he was able to go. As a teacher, we learn very rapidly that if one student is misbehaving, screaming and punishing the entire class of students is a fast way to only accomplish dividing yourself and the students. So again, I can only speak from my perspective and my experiences, but I think I would love to request that whoever is making the decision about our bathrooms come meet and talk about when and how our bathrooms can reopen. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Alan Torey. I am the Chief Operating Officer for the district, and I received concerns from the custodial department regarding the Villanova bathroom situation. I received a request from the administration to, well, I received a request from the custodians concerning that exact issue. And my response to the administration, so I am, it's not figmentary, I'm the person that made the call, I didn't say close all the bathrooms to one. My response was, please use the system that Hamlet Middle School uses and close bathrooms as necessary. That does not mean close all the bathrooms but one. But as I'm sure you can imagine, there was quite a bit of vandalism going on in the bathrooms. We need to have a system in place, not just the administration, but our staff, our teachers, it's a community, to regulate who's going to the bathrooms, when they're going to the bathrooms, to ensure some type of accountability, because they have ruined the bathrooms. I'm sure as educators in the building, some of you are nodding your heads, our bathrooms oftentimes have been vandalized. We've had plumbing issues. We just had one recently at the high school, because things were flushed down that shouldn't have been flushed down in the plumbing. So that happens across the district. There is a program called E-Haul Pass. It allows the administration and teachers to regulate who can and can't go to the bathrooms and when, and which bathrooms they should be going to. So there was no concrete directive from the administration to close all but one bathroom. That, I think, might be a mixed communication. The communication out was, please use the system that Hamlet uses. Hamlet uses E-Haul Pass, as does our high school. It's designed to regulate who uses the bathrooms. It's also designed to regulate if teachers are fully utilizing the system with administration to limit who's in your hallways at the secondary level. If it's implemented and totally used, you can cut down, not just at the middle school level, but at the high school level, who's out on passes in the hallways throughout the day, because you can't get a pass unless you electronically request it, and the teacher approves it, and the administration should be able to monitor it from a central location. So I apologize if there was a miscommunication, but it wasn't a directive of just close all bathrooms but one. And I firmly resolve that I'm the person that sent that email, just so it's clear, and I stand by what I sent. We can't keep having our bathrooms vandalized. We need to restrict the access and create an accountability system. And I think the computer system is a good way to do it. Perhaps maybe that messaging didn't get out to the staff. So I hope that answers any questions on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christine Rogers.
Please speak into the mic. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Rogers, and I used to work for the One Sockit School Department. So I started in 2010 as a hall monitor. So as the years went by, I did 10 years there. So as the need went by, I seen they needed help in the hallway. So I would volunteer, go in the hallways every day to keep our children safe. I'm also a parent. I have a senior there as well. So all the teachers, the principals, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Ernest, so as I cleared the hallways out and I created bonds with our students of trust, my boss L., he came to me, well, to Mr. Ernest one day, and was like, well, Ms. Rogers can't be in the hallways no more. But you knew I was there for three consecutive years straight, clearing up those hallways of safety of our faculty, our students, and everything. So my hands was forced to step out, because I'm not cleaning tables and dumping trash, you know? And I feel like by me stepping out, our children are not safe, because who's there helping those students get through the day when they're angry? They would come to me and say, well, Ms. Rogers, this is going on. And if I feel though it's necessary, I'm going to Mr. Ernest, and I'm going to report before the police come up here, before our kids cut and stab each other and shoot each other. You know what I mean? But you're going to put a position in effect to hire someone from the outside to come in and do what I'm doing for our students, instead of, and I said, well, what's the qualifications for the job? If I'm doing it now, what's the qualifications? And they were like, oh, well, you need a master's degree in this and that. Why would you have a 60 to 80-year-old retired police officer in here with young students, young adults? And I'm already in here volunteering, doing the work, honestly, without the pay. I don't care about the pay. I care about our students to be safe and achieve their goals in life, to graduate and to go on in life with the future. I don't think that's fair for me, knowing I dedicated my time at the One Sockit High School to be treated like that, you know?
Thank you.
Hi, Ian Traski. I'm a teacher at One Sockit Middle School at Villanova. I just wanted to preface by saying that I'm in my seventh year here in One Sockit, and I love my job. I love my students. I love my school. I love my coworkers. And I just love everything about what I do. But I am very tired of reading about this district on the news. It's saddening and exhausting, reading about the constant negative things happening. And I understand, and I promote the very positive things that happen in our district all the time, but there is a lot of very overwhelming and very negative news that is coming out of our district. And what it comes down to is, we just really need to get control of our buildings. We have students like Natalie sitting up there, who works, who's worked hard every single day of her life, who has endured extreme adversity throughout her entire life. And students like her don't deserve to be surrounded by chaos. They deserve their school to be a safe and comforting place for them, where they can really excel to their fullest extent. And I understand that there's, you know, a whole host of legal regulations from the state, Department of Education, that, you know, put a lot of pressure on the school districts to keep all the students in school all the time. And I understand that, you know, makes things very difficult for you guys up there and over here. But you know, at some point, you know, something needs to give. The safety and well-being of our students, our staff, our buildings is paramount above all, really. And, you know, no learning at all can happen if the school is unsafe and chaotic. We need sensible and common sense and reasonable consequences for students who repeatedly demonstrate that they're unable or unable to be functional members of our educational community. The fact of the matter is, we have some students who are just unable to do that. And keeping them in school where they get set off, where they set off other students, where they grab other kids' hair and things against lockers, as some of the recent videos have shown, it's not good for anybody. It's doing those kids a disservice. It's doing all the other kids who are just... It's doing all the other kids who are just trying to scrape by and do their best a disservice. And I'm not saying we need to suspend kids or expel them or whatever, but we need some kind of, we need to do something different than what we're doing. I don't necessarily have the answers myself, but what we're doing is, it's just not working. We used to have a very robust behavioral interventionist program. Unfortunately, due to state funding cuts, the loss of grants, we've had to tremendously tear that program down. Now, we used to have three behavioral interventionists at Villanova. Now we have one, and she's split between certain other self-contained rooms and the rest of the building. So effectively, we sometimes just don't have a behavioral interventionist. And I understand that at the high school, they're also way down compared to what they used to have. And I understand this costs money, but there's tons of grants out there, and there are opportunities to get funding to do this. And I hope we're really actively looking to secure grants and funding, even like a year-by-year basis, to kind of fill these gaps, because these people are very necessary in our building, and they can really help put out fires before they get to the point that they did on Monday. I don't have any social media at all. I don't have Facebook, Snapchat, whatever, but even me somehow found out that through friends and whatever, that there were multiple videos on Facebook, of all places, of our students at the high school getting into these battles that happened this week. And it's very disheartening to get texts and messages from friends saying, who aren't highly involved at all with Wunsakka Education, say, did you see those crazy fights that happened in your district? And I'm like, well, now I did. And it's very disheartening, and it just doesn't need to happen. And I understand, and there's a lot of pressure from things way outside of our district, but we need to push back because it's not working and it's not good for our schools. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Heather Neal, 11 Freedom Court, Johnston, Rhode Island. I've been an educator in Wunsakka for 27 years, and anyone who knows me knows how much I love this work. I feel fortunate every day to work with both teachers and students in this community. For more than 15 years, long before COVID, WED has recognized a growing set of factors affecting our children's development. Excessive screen time is one, but so are many other social changes that challenge students' abilities to regulate emotions, communicate respectfully, and build healthy relationships. The isolation of COVID only intensified these challenges. As an instructional coach, I've worked side by side with teachers and students to overcome these barriers. In response, the way we teach has evolved to include explicit structures that nurture the life skills students need to thrive. This approach provides a roadmap to help them reclaim focus, engage in meaningful dialogue, and grow into responsible, capable adults by developing self-management, collaboration, critical thinking, and empathy. The fights we're seeing today are not just a discipline problem. They're a symptom of broader societal shifts. Moving forward will be challenging for all of us because it requires providing consistent structures at school and at home that give students the daily opportunities to practice communication, problem-solving, and self-control. Over the past three years, teachers who implemented these structures have seen measurable results. Their students and families have even spoken to the school committee about the positive impact of building these skills. Those successes paved the way for this to become the first year our entire district will use these supports in every classroom. I share this because it takes all of us, families, students, and educators, setting shared expectations and modeling healthy habits. If we remain consistent, we can help every child grow into a thoughtful, resilient learner and a caring member of our community. Lastly, I'd just like to say that I hope some of the positive of tonight's meeting makes the news as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Moylan, and I'm a parent of a sixth-grade student at Wunsakka Middle School at Villanova. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I come with a sincere concern about student restroom access at the school. Recently, I learned, not through any formal communication from the school or district, but directly from my child, that students have been restricted to a single restroom per gender on the second floor. The girls' restroom reportedly contains only three stalls. The number of fixtures available for the boys has not been disclosed. This policy affects approximately 550 students, according to the National Center for Education Statistics. I believe that's 23, 24-year. As a parent, I find it troubling that a significant change to student access and daily routines was not proactively communicated. Transparency is essential, especially when policies impact student health, dignity, and learning. Under the Rhode Island State Building Code, which adopts the International Plumbing Code, educational facilities must provide one toilet per 50 students, one toilet or urinal, sorry, per female students, one toilet or urinal per 50 male students, one lavatory per 100 students of each gender. For a student body of 550, the minimum requirements are six toilets for girls, three toilets and three urinals for boys, and three lavatories per gender. Restricting access to only three stalls for girls and potentially fewer for boys does not meet these standards. It may also conflict with Rhode Island General Law 16-21-3, Health and Sanitation in Schools, ADA Accessibility Standards, Rhode Island Fire Safety Code regarding safe egress and occupancy. Beyond the numbers, I ask you to consider the daily experience of our students. Long lines, missed class time, and discomfort are becoming routine. Some students are choosing to avoid restroom use altogether. That's not a learning environment. That's a stressor. I know this committee cares deeply about student safety and dignity. That's why I'm confident you'll treat this issue with urgency it deserves. I respectfully ask the school committee to review the current restroom access policy at Villanova and Hamlet, audit the school's compliance with Rhode Island Plumbing and Building Codes, restore full access to all available restrooms, or provide a written explanation supported by inspection reports, disclose the number of operational restroom fixtures currently available to the students by gender, and also improve communication protocols so that families are informed of changes that affect student health and daily routines. If this issue cannot be resolved internally, I'll be compelled to escalate this issue to the Rhode Island Department of Education and the Department of Health for formal review. I'm not here to criticize. I'm here to advocate. Our students deserve facilities that reflect the care and standards we hold to every other aspect of their education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Stewart, president of Wunsakka Teachers Guild and a social studies teacher at Wunsakka High School. It's my privilege to be a teacher. This past March 26, 2025, the educators of Wunsakka attended school committee here to discuss safety issues. And at that time, we were deeply concerned about a child who we thought was dangerous, and the district disagreed. Hundreds of educators came out that night to share some of their stories, some wore t-shirts that read, "Keep Teachers Safe." I still remember that night like it was yesterday. We should note that the guild tonight did not call membership out here. They would have come. They would have come. There was a report in the media that we called out our membership. We did not. That's inaccurate. This past Monday, though, there were several fights, and over a dozen students were arrested at Wunsakka High School. I teach at the high school, and I was proud of the teachers in Paris that day. I know one teacher who attempted to help and ended up in the hospital. I went to visit her, but I was told she was already at school. So I went and found her at school, and I understood she received medical treatment and to return to school on that same day. I just couldn't believe she did that. But this is an example of teachers going above and beyond every day to support our students and to keep faith with each other. They show up. The absenteeism at the high school is remarkably low. You look up the right data on that. I'm just really proud of the teachers, how we've been showing up. Tonight, just want to share a few thoughts on school safety, some measures that I think can be taken right away. I noticed that the tardy kiosks moved in the front hallway. I think we can strengthen cafeteria security, increase adult presence, and security at the back door. And recognize that there is a connection between the smartphones and teacher and student safety. We've seen, whether the students are coordinating the fights with phones or whether they're incentivized to videotape for views, likes, and comments, we think our safety is compromised with the phones. The other districts in Rhode Island are experimenting on ways to deal with cell phones, and I'm hearing tremendous progress, like words like night and day. We taught this way at the high school. Now it's like this without the cell phones. And it's not any one person's fault. We're going to need everybody, everybody's support if we're going to get there. We need the student's support, the family's support, the public's support, the mayor's support. We need the city council's support and our school committee's support. And we may need some technology. I don't know if it's going to be yonder pouches or what, but when it's worked, it changes everything. And I think that seeing the fights as we're seeing them and seeing the cell phones where they're being used should cause us a moment to pause. I've been asked if we need another resource officer. It's a tough question, especially this week where we needed police support. And I want to be clear, Wunsakka Police were responsive, professional, we're deeply grateful for the help. What teachers don't want to see is more resources pulled out of the classroom. For example, we didn't know this earlier this year, for the childhood classes, like the pre-K classes, would receive paraprofessional support. They did. And a very good argument can be made that these children in these classes are the most vulnerable students. Lastly, I recommend that we utilize a school resource that will cost no money. The high school has four 30-minute common planning periods per week, roughly 16 periods per month. And these teachers, we've been asking and asking and asking to utilize at least two of these periods per month so teachers can provide input in front of the administration. Meetings after school are nowhere near as powerful as when you have an entire faculty together to address these issues. Dr. McGee, you have the ability tonight to clarify with Mr. Ernest to utilize the all-staff CPT time to give teachers input on the safety of the school. Years ago, I witnessed these meetings worked very well, and I would like to see them return. You see the deans of discipline, you see the administrators, you see the questions come up, and we learn from each other and we work together. We haven't been doing that in years. It's a simple solution, costs no money. We could be doing that right now. If safety is the primary concern, it absolutely should be, and that's what we're here here tonight, please utilize common planning time to bring the faculty together so we can work on these things together. Yeah. There's a number of priorities that we could disagree about, what would make the school safer, but having these conversations, having regular meetings, not having them canceled, having regular meetings is a start. And it can't just be words. We should and can partner together for our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee this evening? You, you've already been up, so.
Oh, one time?
No, we have others that want to speak.
Good evening. Estelle Bubble, 648 Third Avenue, Wunsakka. I was born and raised in the city, fourth generation. We have the tools, I know we do, here in the city. We need to just pull a little harder. We need to have more discipline in the schools. It's not getting any better with just saying, well, we have this, but we haven't set it aside, we set it aside, but we're not using it yet. No, this is going to get worse before it gets better. And if you need people, like the lady had said, have people walk the halls, have somebody on each floor. If that's what it takes and people are willing to help you, then just do it. I don't know if you still had the ROTC or whatever, if you have that anymore, but that was a blessing. I mean, come on, these are our children that are growing up. Sometimes the parents have to do what they can, and the school has to continue. And we can't give up on our kids because that's our future. So please, be stern and just, you know, this is the way it is, this is the rules, and lay it out. And don't say, oh, well, this is their first offense. No, uh-uh. Nope, first and last, that's what it was years ago. So have a good evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee for the first time?
Good evening. My name is Jay Thomas, and I'm at 123 Baxter Street in Wunsakka. I am, I'm sorry, I have two children as of right now that's in, sorry, one is in the high school, and then I have one child over here at Villanova. What I had noticed about what happened at the high school, to me, there is a lack, seriously, a major lack of accountability with the parents. When I was on Facebook, so many people came against the schools, the teachers, right? But there was, but no one took accountability as a parent, said, well, you know what, maybe it was me, maybe I'm not doing what I should be doing at home. No accountability. So what the children do, they go to school, act up, because they feel as if they can do whatever that they want to do. There is no accountability at home. There is no structure at home. And to me, as a parent of three children, we got to say a firm foundation at home so that when our children goes to school, then they know on how to behave and know how to conduct themselves as a responsible human being. Now, I'm not, you know, I mean, my children have never been in any kind of trouble, but the one thing that I teach my children is to respect one another, is to respect adults. If you get a problem with any adult, come tell me, and I will deal with them myself. But as far as, you know, what I can see, I am a mentor. I mentor young girls. And one day, I had sat down my daughter, and I had asked her, what can I do to help these young girls? And the response I got was startling. My daughter came and told me, they won't listen to you. Again, a lack of accountability at home. Us as parents have to do better by our children, or as our children are going to, you know, they are going to be those same grown adults that's going to be inside these jails, and unfortunately, in the grave because they don't want to listen. There is no respect whatsoever, no respect. But as parents, we're not teaching them to respect one another. We're not teaching them on how to respect the adults, so they are doing what they want to do. I have set up a program under my own nonprofit and under my own business to help mentor these young girls and also boys to learn how to respect themselves and also on how to love themselves, because I feel as if that is a major part of their problem right now, that they don't know how to love themselves and to respect themselves. Thank you.
Anyone else for the first time?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Harmon. I'm with the Nonviolence Institute. Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Harmon. I'm with the Nonviolence Institute. I really just want to take an opportunity to offer a solution, or a part of a solution. I represent an organization that has a outreach team that is trained in de-escalation, mediation, and obviously nonviolence training. I'm not from this city, and I am no way, shape, or form trying to steal any thunder from any local community organization. But we have a trained staff that, that I would like to offer as part of the solution to help these kids in this community. We currently serve Providence, Pawtucket, Central Falls, and Wunsaka. So there's able and willing trained staff that can maybe assist with the community leaders and families that are already trying to do this work with these kids. So I just want to offer a solution, because I can hear the frustration. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time?
My name is Cheryl Rodriguez, 730 North Main Street, Wunsaka, Rhode Island. I'm a parent of three students in the Wunsaka system, a sophomore, a middle school student, and a grade, a grade school student. I'm addressing concerns of the fights that broke out at the beginning of this week, and how the administration downplays every single incident. For example, it says five fights broke out during this week's incidents, when in fact, there were at least 11, with at least 20 different students, in all of the videos I have seen. This week, during these fights, emails were being sent and updated of the numerous shelters in place, in fact, almost eight total in one day, ending with the same story. Those involved were removed and instructional time resumed, thanking staff, administrators, and police for their assistance. But at no time, nobody was in danger. Same old story, which is a lie. The thing is, I'm sure everyone here is aware that this is nothing new. Weekly, there are numerous incidences that occur, lockdown after lockdown, constant shelters in places, threats to our schools. This has been going on for a long time, not just this week or this year, and you are all very much aware of that. You want to remove all the cell phones, because it hides the truth, but in actuality, it's the only protection most of these kids have. You have teachers being thrown on the floor, and/or physically assaulted during these incidences. You have our police department being used and pulled away from where they are truly needed elsewhere. Innocent kids stuck in the crossfire of these fights, disruption to learning, and many, many children, including my own, who has little, literal anxiety of even attending school. Teachers are giving up, because even they cannot have a voice and be heard. But as a parent who has one of my children in the Wunsaka High School, enough is enough. By law, I'm required to send my children to school where they should be safe, and where you are all responsible for them. But what happens if I don't send my children to school with no fault of my own, but for the constant fear something worse is going to happen? It is me who will receive a phone call or knock on my door, concerned, when it's the school that needs a good look. The school is not safe. It is not safe, because the individuals that are causing such havoc makes it that way. A lot of those individuals are repeat offenders with a slap on the wrist. Do you really, truly think suspension bothers them? Now are they there just free in the public to cause more havoc? Where are the metal detectors? A courthouse can have them, or a sporting event, and not the building where our children are required to attend? Where are the harsher punishments after repeated offenses, or alternative learning? Perhaps they can learn from home, seeing Chromebooks are now a widely used option. Instead of hiding that the school department has zero control, and worrying about numbers on paper and attendance, start finding a solution and implementing it, then maybe, just maybe, your numbers and attendance will start rising, because this has been going on for far too long.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time?
My name is Bonnie Pacarski. I live in Lincoln, but I run Milagros Project at 122 North Main. And prior to that, I was the unit director of the Boys and Girls Club for 20 years. So I have a deep relationship with a lot of these kids. I know a lot of these educators, and a shout out to the Wunsaka teachers, because I have seen firsthand what they deal with. All I can say is this, tonight, December 4th, 2019, changed the trajectory of my life. For anyone that doesn't know, it was a day that a student, a 17-year-old girl, was actually shot and killed in the city of Wunsaka. And since then, community-wise, there's been little to nothing done, and the violence just progresses. The young people that are, you know, perpetrating this in the school continue over and over, and putting the, you know, 1,500 other students at risk, when this is just a handful of young people. So I really think and hope that this maybe will be a wake-up call. I know myself and others in the room have been doing this for many years, and made the groundwork for a lot of work that's being done right now. But I hope that people continue to take it seriously, because Maiaja will not be the last person that we see, and not the last young person that we lose in this community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for the first time?
Good evening. My name is Patrick McGee, Superintendent of Schools in the Wunsaka Education Department. I've got quite a list here of talking points. Before I get into that, however, I want to start by talking about the situation with the bathrooms at Villanova Middle School. I was not aware of that. I know Mr. Natariani spoke and explained that situation, but I can assure you that this week, I will be addressing that with the administration at Villanova Middle School. I want to talk a little bit about the fights that occurred at Wunsaka High School on Monday. Like to set the record straight, please do not think that I'm here to make any excuses. I'm not. There were five fights. They were separate fights, and there were 13 arrests. That's unacceptable. Plain and simple. The fights involved some students who were new to our district, from other communities, but again, that's no excuse. The fights did not include any weapons, thank God. I want to thank the Wunsaka Police Department. I want to thank the Wunsaka teachers and staff, Wunsaka High School teachers and staff, and the administrators for their assistance. And mostly, I want to thank the students, because as everybody here this evening very eloquently spoke about the fact that enough's enough. There are students, the vast majority of our students who attend Wunsaka High School are great kids. They come to learn, they come to support, and be positive students and role models in our community. So I want to thank them for their support. Believe it or not, at the high school, the school year started pretty good until Monday. But again, I'm not making excuses. I'm just simply saying that happened. Let me, let me talk a little bit about the history of fighting, not only in the school department, but in the community. Because this is a community problem. Make no mistake about it. I own what's happening in my schools. But this is not just a problem limited to the schools in Wunsaka. This is a pandemic in our community. But I'm the leader, and I've got to try to figure out a way to work with everyone so that this can stop. For about the last five years, probably longer, we've seen an immense uptick in violence and fights, especially at the secondary level, the middle schools, and certainly the high school, and our community. There are gangs in this community. That doesn't help. Again, it's not an excuse, but let's, let's not fool ourselves. There are. There are adults in this community who groom students from our high school, our middle schools, and yes, even our elementary schools, to get involved in gangs. And I'm not saying that what happened on Monday was gang-related. I can't say that for sure. So I'm not going to stand here and say it wasn't, and I'm not going to say that it was. Let me talk a little bit about the community with respect to fighting. I don't know how many of you here, I mean, it seems like a lot of you here see the social media. I mean, how, how can you not see it, unfortunately? That's a cancer on society, as far as I'm concerned. When you have parents, as occurred two days ago, driving their children to Dunn Park to fight, all the while videotaping it and posting it, is disgusting. Yes, we have a lot of work to do in the Wunsaka Education Department. And yes, that's on my shoulders, and I take responsibility. But we can't do this alone. We have to have the support and the cooperation of our parents, because we're not the ones driving them to Dunn Park, or to Cass Park, to fight, filming it. Parent involvement is critical. So you might be asking, well, okay, yeah, what has the Wunsaka Education Department done over the years to try to curb the violence, both within our schools and outside of our schools? Because make no mistake about this, the, the amount of intervention, the amount, the number of mediations, the amount of counseling that our hardworking and dedicated counselors, social workers, teachers, and administrators do on a daily basis is astounding. The number of incidents that are avoided because our dedicated, hardworking professionals who work well beyond the school hours is admirable. But unfortunately, it's necessary. Gentlemen from the Nonviolence Institute, we've worked with the Nonviolence Institute for about the last four years. They've been very helpful here in the community. Again, I say community. They've been, they're in our, they've been in our schools, they're in our community. I have a superintendent's safety cabinet meeting that's been meeting for about three or four years. This is a group of individuals where we meet every other week, and we track the violence that's occurring in our schools, the violence that's occurring in our community, so that we can try to be proactive and get out in front of it. All I'm simply saying is, is I don't want people to think that the Wunsaka Education Department is doing nothing. Because we, the results unfortunately don't show it, but we work extremely hard. But it can't just be on our shoulders. Many times over the last three years, Mr. Quadros, our Director of Social Emotional Learning, our principals from the middle schools and the high school, have met and meet with students who fight. So students are typically suspended if they get into a fight. Before they're readmitted, they meet with me in my office on Fridays. And I can tell you that my Fridays are pretty much devoted solely to that, one after another, after another, after another. I'm getting sick and tired of the excuses from parents, and I'm getting sick and tired of excuses from students. It has to stop. It's not fair to our students and to our staff, who come to school each day and want to learn and get an education, and want to teach our students. I've had enough of it. Somebody earlier said, we suspend, and we do, we suspend, and, and they come back, and it happens again, and we suspend, and they come back, and it happens again. And I'm not saying here that we're going to break the law, because there are laws. There are laws that we have to follow. But I can tell you this, moving forward, we've had conversations today, I had, I had, as the mayor spoke, had a meeting with the mayor, the police chief, some district staff. I met with the union president, Mr. Stewart, today. And I'm going to tell you, moving forward, we are looking at if students are involved in these, in these fights, and certainly if they're repeaters, but not necessarily, if we can establish that a student is a demonstrable threat, then there is a very strong opportunity or possibility that they will be removed from the school setting, potentially up to the remainder of the school year. I've had it, this is it. I am sick and tired of this behavior. We need the parents to work with us, because we can't do it alone. But I'm telling you, I'm not going to sit by any longer, watching these kids come into our schools and continue to disrupt, and get into fights, and cause havoc, because our kids don't deserve it, and our teachers don't deserve it. Briefly talking about cell phones, that's a conversation we're going to have this year. Mr. Stewart, and others, I think Mr. Andrews spoke of that. Enough's enough. There are other districts. I realize that we're a large district, we have a large high school, but I'm not using that as an excuse. We have to do something with cell phones moving forward. Yes, we have a policy. That policy says students are not supposed to have cell phones. And somebody used the analogy of, you know, just the inability to, 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 to control that. But I can tell you that I will be meeting with our policy subcommittee and the school committee to discuss the use of cell phones in our schools next year. Because I don't believe every student needs a cellphone in school. They don't. In fact, when we do have emergencies, they get in the way. Oftentimes, false information is shared, and it's not helpful. But I'm telling you, things are going to change, and I'm, and I'm letting those students and their families know that we're taking back the middle schools and the high school, and this is going to end. Thank you.
And now we'll continue with the business, the remaining business that's on our agenda. First, we'll go to the approval of minutes, and I'll make a motion to approve the September 10th, 2025 First, we'll go to the approval of minutes, and I'll make a motion to approve the September 10th, 2025 closing meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Abstain.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the September 10th, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now we'll go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to approve, to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, is there any item that we want to discuss?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
I just want to bring to the school's attention in our purchases and transfers that we are hiring five behavioral interventionists. They're listed in that purchase. Because remember, at the end of last year, there was a lot of discussion about losing them. So it's good that we now are able to provide with some money to provide five more this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Mrs. Kepiscus?
Mr. Chair, I don't know how to propose this motion, but I'd like to discuss two items that are in purchases.
That's fine.
Both to the City of Wensocket for fire and police details, the significant amounts. Can we discuss where they came from? Are we discussing that tonight?
Yes, the two invoices that we have for about $800,000, correct?
Closer to $1 million, but yeah.
Mr. Perrier, would you like to add to this discussion? Because these are invoices, Ms. Kepiscus, that we do. We finally received them. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Perrier.
These are the invoices for the SROs that we had for both fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. The invoice is a little behind getting up here to the city, or from the city to the school department. Now that we've received them, we're putting in front of you for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because a lot of people think that the SROs are provided to us free of charge by the city. They're not. We pay for them.
Correct.
And I want to make sure people understand that because they say, why don't we have more SROs? We can't afford more SROs. That's why we don't have more SROs. We're paying for them. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
The only one thing I want to add to the SRO situation, it's also a matter of how much staff is available. Even if we wanted them, the chief is down. He's got 87 members on his police force, and I think he's allowed to go to 104. But we don't have the manpower, or the women power on the force. And even in terms of the amount of candidates for the police academy, where in the past we may have had several, now it's just a handful to fill in the vacancies. So it's a matter of money and it's a matter of availability.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to your superintendent's report, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just wanted...
There's no report.
You missed the student.
You miscommunication.
Student.
Do you have a report? You do? Okay. Is there a reason why it wasn't submitted? I mean, somehow we didn't...
He did not email it to you?
I don't think we received it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But okay, if you've got one, please.
Yeah, I have one.
Share it with us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Natalie Gonzalez, Wensocket High School student representative. I'm here to present the latest news from the students of Wensocket High School. The Wensocket High School and area career and technical center students participated in the annual blood drive, once again showing strong community and involvement and support. Many students signed up to donate, highlighting the generosity and dedication of our school community. Opening night for the John R. Dion Athletic Complex. The long-awaited complex opened with a great excitement and school spirit. Students and athletes, families and community members came together to celebrate. The new complex provided modern facilities and better game day experiences. Food trucks were on site, adding to the celebration and making the night even more enjoyable. School Picture Day will be take place on Friday, September 26. Senior portfolio slides 1, 2, 9, and 11 are due October 30. Yearbooks are being sold now for pre-purchase. And senior pictures and quotes are due October 31. Class officers will be elected next week. Athletics updates, football team won their first home game at the new complex against Pilgrim, 39 to 6. And then girls soccer beat Central Falls in a close game, 1 to 0. Our girls volleyball team, Varsity, off to a strong start with 6 to 1 record this season. And then the girls cross-country team, several runners participating in high and early meets, showing strong effort and improvement. Boys soccer team has been building team chemistry and working hard in each match. Cheerleading has brought high energy and boosted school spirits at the opening night. And... Sorry. For Monday's shelter-in-place situation, the school acted fast and went right into shelter-in-place procedures to keep everyone safe. Students and staff stayed calm and followed directions, clearing the halls, which helped everyone breathe smoothly. Our school staff did an amazing job keeping parents informed and involved during the situation. Classes resumed with little to no disruptions with the help of our amazing teachers. Thank you, and if you want, I will share the document because there's pictures of everyone on it.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Good job.
I don't know how you're going to follow that, Dr. McGee, but we'll ask you.
I should just throw the towel in here, I'll tell you.
Before we do that, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file our student representative report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since our last meeting, the district has hired three full-time kindergarten teachers. We've hired a math teacher at the high school, a grade-three multilingual learner teacher at Citizens, in addition to several non-certified hourly stipend and extracurricular positions. As of today, the following vacancies remain. We have 11 teaching positions. We have 17 paraprofessional positions that are vacant. We have one secretarial position, and we filled the remaining custodial position prior to this meeting. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any questions or comments? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Morale, would you give us your report and special education update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As of September 21st, this was the first date that we were able to get the data points from the Skyward tracking system for all the students pre-K to 12 in our schools. Currently, we have a total of 1,401 students receiving special education services within our schools. This is slightly lower than where we ended at the end of last school year. However, in the beginning of the school year, we saw it off lower, and then as the school year progresses, we usually gain more students. This represents 27.2% of our total enrollment. Right now, we currently have 26 students in our transpro classroom. This is a larger class than we had last year. And we have 112 students in our out-of-district placements with 111 of them with IEPs. The number of out-of-district students was a lot lower in the beginning of September, but we had many students move into our district over the last couple of weeks that were already placed in out-of-district placements, and we continued those placements until we got to know the students. That's the end of my report. If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Kepiscus.
Ms. Morale, I just have one question. As I was sitting here thinking of those numbers, I know we include out-of-district placements, but do we include students with IEPs who are in the charters and who are in the parochial schools? We do not.
The parochial school at Good Shepherd, we do. I currently don't have the number of pre-K students in the Head Start and the parochial. We're still working out those numbers. We still have students that are coming in and out. I should have that number solidified the next time I report out. I usually have that number. But I do not have the number of students that are at the charter schools because there's other students from other districts that go there also.
Do we provide services in the charters or do they have their own staff?
The charter schools have their own staff. Rise Prep has their own staff. Founders and Beacon, they have their own special education department and own staff. Good Shepherd does not, so we do provide services to the students at Good Shepherd.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business. We have several bids. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-10, Coaching for Behavioral Interventionists. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Turn it over to you, Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Front of the school committee this evening is the results of the 26-10 Special Education Coaching for Behavioral Interventionists and Goal Setting Bid. We did have one vendor respond with two different bids, and the winner being GB Educational Partners, $36,800.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
What does this coach do? I mean...
I can take that. So this coach provides professional development to teacher, special education support staff and teachers throughout the district from pre-K to 12. They will also provide coaching within the schools to help with creating behavior intervention plans, helping assess through functional behavior analysis, helping teachers collect data, and also helping them write IEP goals and objectives for students, more for newer teachers. But sometimes it's a good support for teachers that may need more help of thinking of other options for students.
When I looked at the purchases and what I mentioned earlier, there were five behavioral interventionist positions that we're funding. They're not within the school, they're an outside agency that's providing this. Doesn't the outside agency have some oversight?
This is a different, it's not a behavioral interventionist, it's a behavior supports. I know it says interventionist in the title. So she helps the teachers create behavior plans. The behavior interventionists work one-on-one with the students to help change the student's mindset and help with the behaviors. This person is a coach to the teachers to help the teachers.
That's what it says. Well, coaching the behavioral interventionists, that's what this position does, right?
It's coaching the teachers.
No, it's behavior interventions. It's coaching the teachers, not the behavioral interventionists. It's behavioral interventions for the teachers. Small nuance there.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Kepiscus?
Yeah, my question is with regard to all these bids, they all seem to be awarded to GB Educational Partners. And I notice in the bids, it's Hannah Goodwin-Brown. Isn't that, is that the same Hannah Goodwin-Brown of New England Base Camp? And is she no longer with New England Base Camp? Do we know? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-11, Professional Development for PLC Citizen/Portier. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Costa. Mr. Perrier.
This is the results for bid 26-11, Citizens Portier, CSIP and Interventional Professional Development. For this bid, we did have two vendors bidding with three different bids, and the winning bid was GB Educational Partners LLC for $4,450.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one question.
Vice Chair Burke.
On both of them too. The funding for this is local?
It's mixed. Actually, most of these are covered by grants. I think only one is local. One, if I remember correctly.
Hey, well, that's good to hear.
So Title II, I believe IDEA, has some coverage for this as well. So this is not just a fully locally-funded bid package.
Anyone else?
PSI grant for this one. Thank you, Dr. Holt.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-13, MTSS Consultant Services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier.
This is the results for bid 26-14, PBIS, and this is funded by the Stronger Connections Grant. For this bid, we had one bidder responding with two different bids, and the winning bidder was GB Educational Partners for $20,150.
Just to paraphrase Vice Chair Burke, what does this group do? What benefits are we going to get from this?
I'll defer to Mr. Quadros to answer that question. So all of our schools have a PBIS team, which is Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports. So it's utilized to try to promote positive culture, support in regulating students, support in creating a culture that is more conducive to exhibiting more desired behaviors. That framework is a specialization that Hannah has unique qualifications for and has been doing work in supporting the district over the last number of years. We hope to continue that work so that all of the school-based PBIS teams get the support needed to continue to build a robust PBIS program.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-14, PBIS Interconnected System Framework Support. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Back to you, Mr. Perrier.
I believe we're talking about bid 26-13, the MTSS Consultant Services. For this bid, we had four vendors responding with five different bids, and the winning bid was for GB Educational Partners for $4,000.
Anyone? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-15, Curriculum and Instruction Support Services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any questions about this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Vice Chair Burke.
Looking at all these support, all right, systems, individuals, I didn't add up how much it's going to cost us. Luckily, they grant money. But we're also short teachers. And it seems to be we're hiring a lot of administration when we should be, you know...
Well, these grants, Mr. Burke, unfortunately, they're pretty pigeonholed on what we can spend them on. If we did have it our way, I'd be honest with you, I'd probably spend every grand we had on teachers and teachers alone.
Yeah, I kind of thought that was going to be the...
Unfortunately, we are pigeonholed into what we can spend this in. For all these grants, we actually go through a pretty rigorous grant approval process, whether that be through the state, well, it is through the state, and oftentimes through the state. These are federally-run grants. And we have to be very specific about the uses, and I can assure you that, you know, we try to utilize them as much as we can for direct instruction when we can. But these grants are oftentimes for more than that. So we do our best to try to figure out a way to spend the money as effectively as possible for the students of the Wensocket Education Department.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve MOA 2025 Pago Award. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier.
In front of you here is the 2025 Pago Award for the Wensocket Education Department. The approved cost was a little over $1.7 million, and our Pago adjustment is $1.5 million. So we're getting a $1.5 million investment from the state for $238,000. We're going to be using this fund. Uh, we're going to be using this fund. We've already used some of it for the improvements to the intercom systems throughout the district. Uh, you approved that earlier this year. I believe it was sometime over the summer. When that came in front of you, uh, we've utilized $150,000 of this for, um, a transportation study through Transpar. And the remaining money is going to be going into the building of our new, um, elementary school at Berryfield.
Anyone? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to discuss and approve MOA 2025 Round Two Technology and Equipment Award. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leclerc, Ms. Costa. Mr. Perier.
Um, this is the Round Two Award from the SBA Capital Fund, uh, 21st Century Technology and Equipment. Uh, this is $193,500 that will be getting a hundred percent funding from the state and we will be utilizing this in our Career and Tech Center, uh, for upgrading and, uh, upgrading CTE classrooms.
Thank you. Anyone? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.